I have seven o'clock. If we can turn the microphones, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask that the city manager call roll.
Here via Skype.
Jeff Alson.
Here.
Jeff Fox.
Here.
Betty Martine.
Here.
Justice Smith.
Here.
Appreciate that. We're going to go in and open up today's meeting like we always do at the moment of silent prayer. If you'll bow your heads with me. Amen. Now please rise and join us in the saying of the pledge of allegiance, the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. We have a pretty short agenda this evening. There's a couple of proclamations that I'll read here in a moment. And then the only two agenda items is a supplemental agreement and a temporary note resolution for that. First item to come before council this evening are the amendments of the October 2nd, 2018 city council meeting and understand that there were possible some changes that needed to be made.
Ms. Mayor, I was just going to ask that on page five, there's a paragraph with my comments, and I'd just ask that that be reviewed and amended. There's quite a few, just like one-word typos in that paragraph where I said abatement in the minutes read statement and a couple of other places. So I just asked that that be reviewed and amended. And then I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
At first and second with those revisions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And you want to point out that we are in the process of interviewing for our new city clerk, so that's exciting to have that. We had some discussion before, because I know our minutes are still showing the word-for-word verbatim, and that's something I don't think we... I know at one point we'd asked earlier about, can we just go back to regular minutes the way we should be? Is that a long, drawn-out process, city attorney, or how?
That is not. The council bylaws don't direct that the minutes have to be verbatim, so we can amend the process to an action-based minute or recording of the minutes. And anyone wanting to be recorded verbatim, like official statement or taking a position on an issue, can ask that that section be recorded verbatim. So that may be something the council wants to do. I know Planning Commission is also looking at moving toward an action-based minutes. It does reduce some of the, you know, direction as far as the detail of what's being said, but it allows for cleaner, clearer minutes. And most attorneys advise clients to go towards an action-based minute, minutes recording rather than verbatim.
Appreciate that. Sorry to put you on the spot, and I know it's not on the agenda here, but that's just topical conversation we've actually kind of had up here before the meeting, and it's something especially with the new clerk. And now, you know, upgrades to technology and everything's coming in, I think. Well, we can talk about that later on in the agenda, but... Okay. Next thing to come up before council, item seven, is the discussion and approval of appropriations ordinance 18-20.
Ms. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve appropriations ordinance 18-20.
Second.
At first and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Let's move on to city requested appearances. And Andy Willam, uh, Willams, excuse me, with Allen Gibson Hewlick is here to walk us through our annual audit.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me here tonight. I am going to talk a little bit about the audit results. I'm not going to go through the financial statements step by step. That is something normally done by Ted and his department. I think you get them, they're more timely when you get your budgetary statements, but I'm just here to talk about the results of the December 31st, 2017 audit. First, I would like to thank Ted and his staff for getting us the information requests that we asked for and then answering all of our questions. Sometimes we ask a lot of questions. The first thing I'm going to talk about a little bit is our governance letter, which is our required communications between our firm and the governing board, which is you guys. I'm just going to point out a few highlights of that letter. There were no new significant accounting policies or no new GAAP standards that were implemented in the current year. The next thing I would like to point out is the audit adjustments. We prepare several audit adjustments that are reviewed by Ted and the staff and the financial statements themselves. Most of these are to get from the budgetary to the GAAP basis, which is the entity-wide financial statements. There was nothing unusual about these entries. They were the same type of entries that we have done every year. We did have one uncorrected misstatement for $2,000 that was not recorded. Those we consider to be very immaterial, and we just kind of pass on those, and then we ask that the staff pass on those. They were always able to make those entries if they choose, but in this case, we did not make that entry. Internal control matters, and again, these are the same matters that come up from year to year. There is one material weakness with regards to capital assets and recording those capital assets, and the material weakness comes from recording construction projects and closing construction projects and getting those properly recorded in the financial statement so we can record capital assets. We also assist in preparing the depreciation entries and the depreciation schedule itself. So that's where that comes from. There are some other items that we consider to be significant deficiencies and not material weaknesses, and these are segregation of duties. And then again, the financial reporting, where we assist in putting together the entity-wide financial statements. One other item I would like to point out in the letter is regarding information security governments. We have been talking to all of our clients about the importance of information security and keeping your information secure. I think we just want everyone to be aware of what the risks are out there. I'm not going to talk about the risks, but maybe amongst yourselves, you should be talking about what the risks are in specific to the city of Bel Air. And there is some information in that letter that will direct you. You can look at questions you should be asking yourselves and that. And Ted does have my contact information. If you want further information, we can assist you with that, too. The last thing I'm going to talk about is the purpose of our audit is to provide an opinion on the financial statements themselves. And our opinion is on pages one and two in the financial report. Again, we had an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can give that the financial statements are free of material misstatement, which means the numbers that we got and the support that we got agreed with those numbers. So there wasn't anything we found that was in error. That is all I have. Does anybody have any questions regarding the audit and what we do for the audit?
Certainly. Well, I appreciate you being here and sharing this. We have the letter, and we have the full audit report, and something that is available to the public, so...
Okay.
To, you know, transparency and...
Okay. Again, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we're going to move into proclamations. There are two of them before me this evening. Is anybody in the audience here representing Bullying Prevention Month or Red Ribbon Drug Free Week? Seeing none, I will read those here from the bench. First one is Red Ribbon Drug Free Week. To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas the city of Bel Air values the health and safety of all of our citizens, and whereas local leaders know that the support of people is the most effective tool they have in efforts to reduce the problems associated with alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, and whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. And whereas it is the goal of the Kansas Red Ribbon Campaign in the city of Bel Air to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign, and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. And whereas the Kansas Red Ribbon Campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibility for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without illegal drugs or illegal use of legal drugs. Whereas October is also National Medicine Abuse Awareness Month, and citizens are encouraged to quote "lock your meds" end quote, and properly dispose of old or unused over-the-counter prescription medication. Therefore, I, David Austin, may or do hereby proclaim October 23rd through the 31st, 2018 as Red Ribbon Week in the city of Bel Air, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to participate in drug prevention education activities. Wear and display red ribbons and make a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. And I have signed that, and I ask that that be passed to the city manager. Second proclamation I'm going to read this evening is for Bullying Prevention Month. Whereas bullying is a physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people. And whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through technology such as the internet and cell phones. And whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually. And whereas thousands of Kansas children and adolescents are affected by bullying annually. And whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems, and students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, and attending community activities. And whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors. And whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor David Austin, proclaim October as Bullying Prevention Month in Bel Air, and encourage students, parents, and citizens to connect, empower, and transform schools, recreation programs, religious institutions, and community organizations to engage in a variety of bullying awareness and prevention activities. I have also signed this, and I ask that that be passed now. So under our agenda, we're going to move to citizens' concerns. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Hearing none, we will move to reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Hawes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to remind all the citizens that Bel Air's Fall Festival is this weekend, Saturday. Please come out, it'll be a good time, car show, lots of things for the kids to do. Weather should be nice, as from the last thing I saw, it should be in the 60s and sunny. So, a lot better than last year, so come on out. That's it, that's all I got.
Councilmember Martine? Oh, Councilmember Benage via Skype, I'm so sorry, sir.
All right. I do have a few things to talk about, so if I get too... Well, I might throw something, remind me I need to speak up. So, I did attend the lab home meeting on December, or October 9th, and the most important thing there was the North Junction project. Tristan did provide a link on the Bel Air website so that citizens can review this project. It's a multi-phase to the project. The first one is called Green Phase, slated to start in March of 2019. We replace the I-235 bridges over Little Arkansas River. It'll also remove a bridge over Seneca Street Bridge over I-235 and provide a roadway for the Seneca traffic in the area. Other phases will start at times to be determined. So on November 8th, there will be a public open house, the Green Project at 5:30 PM at USB 259 School Service Center. It's at 3850 North Hydraulics, and they'll start with a project overview and then a public comment period after that. I also attended the League of Kansas Fitness Conference in Topeka, and thank you, city, for providing that opportunity. The council member Martine, and along with our attorney Jackie Kelly and Stephen, our city engineer, as well as Ty, last year we were at the meeting as well. So I was able to see the president, which was a great thing to do. I did attend several breakout meetings. Of interest were the home rule matter, why they matter, and the Kansas Constitutional provides for home rule. The League's legislative encroaching on this home rule, and so we need to watch this issue to make sure that they're not doing that. Effective social media, a lady named Janelle Watkins from Facebook gave a presentation and asked for, I asked for a copy of her presentation, and I will willingly provide that to anybody who would be interested as soon as I get it. I've not gotten it yet, but I did ask for it. Of interest, particular interest was emergency management. We learned some things about preparedness for us as a city, for things like tornadoes and flooding. So I would like to ask that we have a discussion about this, a presentation, maybe at a workshop in the future, if we could do that. I don't know if we want to do that on the 2029th, or if that would be longer than we really should do for that workshop, but I would like to just do that in a workshop in the near future, and so that we can understand our emergency management process. Overall, it was a good conference. I did get to see Congressman Ron Estes after the Trump rally, and I did tell him of our concerns with the FCC cell tower regulation. I did send him a link to some of the information that Jackie provided. I also attended the county association of cities meeting on October 13th. It was at the Wichita County Law Enforcement Center on WISU campus. Very nice facility, tours are available for anyone interested. They do offer a 13-week citizens' police academy for no cost to the citizens, and you should contact the center if anyone's interested in that. I also attended the planning commission meeting on October 11th. There was lively discussion there about the home-based business in Greenwich. This is a Seju County, but they had asked the Bel Air Planning Commission to render an opinion concerning an application to rezonant commercial. After about two-hour discussion, they voted 3 to to recommend Seju County not allow zoning change. Keith Price also presented a brief history of the Art Plan at 53rd and Grove. That plan dates back to 2002. No action was taken, as this was only an informational agenda item for this meeting. And that's all I have to report, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Martine?
I also'd like to thank the city for paying the way for the council members and the staff to go to the league. I did attend some of the same workshops that Mr. Benage did, but I also attended How to Build Your Census, and the next year, the next time they're going to do a census count is 2020. I attended the community internships benefits for both cities and the students, and years ago, not, well, maybe not years ago, we used to get interns from WSU as, to help us out with things here in the office. I also attended the local disasters, local federal and state, and then it dawned on me, I'd like to ask the mayor or Mr. Lasher, whichever one's in charge, "Mayor, you and I are the only one that have badges. In case there's an emergency, these guys can't get in, and I don't want to be the only one." Hopefully and preferably, we never have an emergency, but just in case we do, they do need their badges, and probably some of the new employees also need badges, because they'll have to come for the water and backups and et cetera. I also went on a bus trip. They toured, let's see, what was it, South Kansas Avenue in Topeka, and in 2012, they got approved for multimillion-dollar improvements and projects for this street. The thing that really impressed me the most was on this street, they were redoing this huge building and was making it into a motel, and we got to tour that. But the thing that I really liked the most, they had really, I'm not sure who took which place first, but they had statues on each side of the street, benches to where people could sit. Statues were like what you see down in the city of Wichita, and they were very impressive, especially of the cattle drive and the people that were there back in the old ages. I do have some other handouts and stuff that, as a delegate voter, that I brought back, the statement of the municipal policy that we voted on. If anybody'd like a copy of it, I'll be glad to make you a copy, because it's, I think it's about six pages. The only thing that I didn't really like about that is you don't get that until as you go in and sit down in your chairs, but, so you have to read it quite fast. But other than that, I had a real good time and enjoyed going, enjoyed the company I had there.
Mr. Mayor, I was also able to attend the Seju County Association of Cities meeting on Saturday, but I won't add anything to Councilmember Benage's comments there. The one thing that I will share with the council is, I, a couple of months ago, asked our IT and finance director, Mr. Ted Henry, about some of our upcoming IT initiatives and IT projects, and was just kind of questioning him about that after our budget discussion, and we had some line items in there. He was kind enough to set up a meeting with myself, him, and our IT resource with One Source Paul, and we met and kind of walked through some of those projects, and I won't go into any of the details there, but I'll just share that I was concerned with some of what I saw in the budget items that we have out there for these IT projects. I think they're absolutely warranted, and so just wanted to make you aware that I'd had that conversation with them and fully support the projects that are forthcoming, and they're definitely needed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Alson?
I just wanted to say thank you to the volunteers and the community planning, the community development committee for gearing up for the Fall Festival, and we're looking forward to that. And thank you to all the volunteers that are planning on attending to help out, so thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that report from all of you. It sounds like a very busy couple of weeks, and certainly it's a, it's actually a good thing that we can do things like IT updates. I'm glad that you were able to do that, and I appreciate our staff accommodating and making that happen. No formal report tonight, except for I want to ask everybody to join me in wishing Councilmember Martine a happy birthday. Her birthday was on Saturday, so happy birthday, Betty.
Thank you.
And welcome, Betty. The Fall Festival guest is on Saturday, and I look forward to seeing everybody out there for that. On Thursday, Councilmember Hawes and I are scheduled to do a presentation to the Joint Legislative Transportation Vision Task Force. That happens, it's an all-day thing, they're kind of looking at the economic development and transportation, and Councilmember Hawes and I are part of that, him representing 254 and me representing the city, and that'll be interesting. We'll do that right after lunch. Then to address Councilmember Martine, yeah, as far as the badges, yeah, we kind of talked along with all the updates, updating some photos and all that, and that is part of that, so work on that, so we appreciate that. With that, we're going to move on to city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council covered the league conference pretty thoroughly for the things that council members would be most interested in. I would only add that the emergency management meeting was insightful in that, at that time, if there were ever a disaster, the state and federal agencies would come in, help FEMA and then the state emergency agencies would come in to help. They would look to the mayor and council for guidance on where to stage for emergencies. So that can be a big responsibility, depending on the development agreements, on locations and neighborhoods. You know, if you think about Katrina in, I'm not sure exactly what year that was, but they staged the relief and care in the stadium, and all that damage had to be taken care of after the fact. So that's the kind of decisions that council and mayor are making at that time, so it may be appropriate within the next year to look at our emergency management plan and see exactly what priorities would, would and should be considered at that time for critical things like staging and directing FEMA support as well. But that was a helpful session at the league conference. Also, council has prioritized working with 259, fostering the partnership with them. Just an update, that they are working on a demographic study for finding out exactly what the 259 district schools look like and what is needed. After that demographic, they actually plan on contracting for that demographic study this week, and following that, they will use that demographic study to inform a boundary study. So they may decide to redraw boundaries, which could impact Bel Air, what Bel Air schools are. At that point, there'll be discussion about whether to finish schools that don't have fields and sports facilities and whatnot. They did ask that we continue to communicate. At this stage, they still feel like they're at the information gathering stage, so they're not ready to commit to anything or to meet with any additional information, but they wanted to keep Bel Air council in the loop, because they know the priority of that partnership to our council. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor? I forgot one thing to add. On the disaster local federal and state, they do have a person that would come and speak to us, and it won't cost us anything. I have her number at home, but I didn't bring it with me. So if and when we get ready, like Jackie said, to go over the policy, that if we've had somebody come and give us new ideas to add to the policy we already have, might be helpful. Sorry, I forgot that.
City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Wanted to let council know that the Bel Air Lions Club donated to the Tree Board $300 this year, and that money is going to be used to purchase and plant Schumard oak in Central Park near the existing playground. And so we would like to thank the Bel Air Lions Club for that gift, and the Tree Board, I know, appreciates it. Also, we, the city, received a grant in the amount of $1,600 from the federal government under the Bulletproof Vest Grant Program, and that amount will cover half the cost of bulletproof vests that we need to purchase next year. Bulletproof vests have a time limit on when they're good, and so we do have to replace those so, every so often, because their term expires, and so this is a nice grant to help pay for 50% of that cost. Last thing I wanted to mention is Ted and I actually went through the election process, not like you guys go through, but Ted was elected to the Board of Directors for the Kansas Government Finance Officers Association, and at the league conference, I was elected vice president of the KNET Board, Kansas Municipal Insurance Trust, which does our workers' comp. So, that's all I had, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we're going to move into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. Like I said, just two items before council this evening. First thing, the first item, city contracted with MKEC. We did that to engineer water, sewer, drainage, and streets. This is in phase one of the Villas of Prestwick. When the public infrastructure was installed, we require the improvements be inspected during the construction to make sure that everything, make sure the work is being done in accordance with our standards, with our codes. An engineering firm is hired to complete this work, which is why staff is recommending MKEC for that. The cost of the service is included in the additions and specials, so no additional cost to the city of that. But again, this is to hire an engineering firm to, they can look and make sure that we're following, that work is being done correctly, and I can see that Jason Gish is here, so if we have any questions, we put him on the spot.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we approve supplemental agreement number one to the agreement for engineering services with MKEC Engineering and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
Second?
First and second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
I'm Dee. This is a temp note resolution. With Phase 1 improvements of the Villas at Prestwick beginning, money is needed to be in paying for construction. The city will issue a three-year temp note to fund the project. Once the work is complete and the three years is up, a permanent general obligation bond will be issued and a special assessment spread to the benefiting property owners. Due to the size of the temp note and amount of reserves maintained by the city, Bel Air will be purchasing these notes. And I see that our finance director Ted Henry is here, and Kevin Callen is here with Gilmore and Bell to answer any questions we may have on this with the big project of this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just a question that I have for whoever would like to answer it. This seems a little bit different than what we've done in the past as far as issuing bonds to fund projects. Can you talk a little bit about why we would want to do this and if there are any disadvantages to this approach?
It's a good question. This is different. So the discussion, I'll give you some background, was we have these projects and they're going to be undertaken fairly late in the year. Not large projects, not a large temporary note financing for what the city has typically done, and so we had discussions about, well, do you have cash? Could you pay for some of these things? It's late in the year. What's your budget look like? Do you have budget flexibility to pay for some of those things? And what it boiled down to was, well, maybe we do have the budget flexibility, maybe we have the cash, but when the intent is that this will be a special assessment project at some point and the city will be paid back, it's not just a budgeted expenditure where it's gone, and there's no expectation of getting paid back, that you would want to get paid back. We had a discussion, well, what about interest? If you just spent your cash, would you impose some sort of opportunity cost, interest sort of calculation on this? And the discussion we had was, I don't have any good authority to recommend for the city being able to do that. You could spend the money, but when you expect to be reimbursed, and then you start talking about interest, well, how do we set the rate, and under what authority do we impose the rate and pass it along? So I suggested that one of the permitted investments under your public monies investment statute is your own temporary notes, and suggested that that's why that's there. The legislature put that there, so if you have cash, you can invest in your own projects and buy your own temporary notes. Then you have a formal methodology for imposing interest and calculating it, and on these projects, you want to track those things because those all become project costs that get assessed. So it is different. If it was a larger project, undoubtedly, we wouldn't be doing this, but this is going to fall within a range that you have some cash, it's invested in something else. Why not invest it in your own temporary notes? You'll still earn that interest. And so, on the one hand, it's an investment, and out of whatever fund it gets invested, it's still going to be shown as an investment. You get to the end of the year, and your auditor's looking at things, it's just invested money, but it transfers into a project fund as well, and then you can spend it. There's an exception from the budget law, when you have temporary notes and bonds for those sorts of expenditures, you don't have to have budgeted those from a number of months ago, or in this case, if we're spending it in 2018, it would be almost a year and a half ago. So kind of some technical reasons for doing it. First, it's small enough, you can do it. Second, it gives you some flexibility and puts your reserve fund money and cash to good use. The idea is, we'll still have a three-year maturity, and so assessments wouldn't be imposed until construction's complete or to the end of those three years. But we've also talked about if the city has other projects in the coming year or something that you're going to need to do temporary notes, that you could redeem these temporary notes and sort of roll these projects into that temporary note, which would be a more traditional financing, and so you get that invested money back with interest.
So my understanding that if we were to decide that we needed to use these reserve funds for another project, we would be able to convert this note to another source of financing?
You could go publicly offer, which is what the city has typically done. We'll go sell these to the public offering. Hopefully, the timing would be good, that maybe it's not a standalone, maybe it's, hey, we'd like to have this investment back. Well, we have some other projects we need to go to temporary notes on anyway, so we'll roll that forward and get that reserve.
So we're not actually locking up this money to where we can't use it?
Right. And I, your question, I have the long answer because it's sort of technical. Disadvantages, I don't see any. Advantages are particularly compared to, well, what if we just spent our cash and we just carried this for a while? Is, it's very above board, it's transparent, this is what the interest cost was, the way you would typically have an interest rate associated with your temporary notes when they're publicly offered. As I mentioned earlier, the statute provides for it, which I think is an indication of, well, if you can invest your public monies in your temporary notes and issue temporary notes for projects, and somebody at the legislature thought, here's how you move those reserve fund monies into sort of project funds and put that money to use that way.
Just a quick question to make sure I understand what these funds are. These funds are reserved in case we have to dip into these reserves because of some emergency. Is that a correct statement? There's a statutory requirement for these reserves, is that correct?
100%. Councilmember Benage, these funds that we're going to use, so with our idle cash, we right now do it with the KMIT, Kansas Municipal Pool. So basically, it's a mutual fund that the state of Kansas set up for all municipalities participate in. I don't know if Ty, I think he included in his report, but we receive about 1.75% on those idle funds. I've had at least 1.5 million in that fund since 2013, maybe more. And so what this does, and what Kevin Kent really is, this does is allow us to, the market right now is at 3% or so, so we could capitalize on having a little better interest rates on idle funds that we don't even use for operations. These are our 30% limit that we set on our fiscal policy, saying we need 30% of revenues in reserves. This is where I throw a majority of our reserves is in KMIT. What this process does, and what Kevin was leading to, and I can put it in somewhat layman's term, is it's basically, I treat it as an investment vehicle. I'm just, instead of KMIT, I'm putting it in the project fund. The advantage in what Kevin just said is it's callable anytime, so if, for some reason, the world ends and we need to call on these reserves, which we haven't done for years and years, I can say right there, let's wrap these up into a temp note, and we'll get that money back with earning more interest than we currently are. The other thing, I think that's about it.
Mr. Mayor? I think this sounds like a great idea and a really creative way to generate some extra revenue without raising taxes, so I appreciate you, you guys bringing this up.
I would add, too, if the interest rate is better than what you're already getting from the MIPS pool, that doesn't mean it's going to cost the project anymore because the rate will be set based on what the market is for this sort of temporary note, and it's less complicated. I mentioned the public offering. There's some expense involved in that, so you save some expenses to the project by not having the public offering, and I think it may be a win-win if we do this right.
Mr. Mayor?
Questions?
I was just going to make a motion to authorize the offering for sale of general obligation temporary notes, series 2018A of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
I'll second.
And first in two seconds. Any other questions or comments?
I guess I do have one question, Mr. Mayor. I guess this is for Mr. Henry, and that is, you mentioned that 30% buffer that we have in place and that we're above that a little bit. Theoretically, if we were right at that 30%, would this still be something you'd be comfortable doing, or is it, what's your thought on?
Yeah, right now, we're at like 54%, if you look at, but if we're at 30%, I think that's 2.3 or so, I think, or maybe a little less than that. That's something that I would evaluate on a year-to-year basis, even with this, every time we temp note, I'm going to evaluate what our cash flow is, what the market's looking like, and say, okay, we can continue this on until the next issuance. The beauty of this is the callable at any time. I don't know if I would lock the city in for three years with, you know, a million dollars, but I'm in a consumer risk adverse nature as your finance director, but this is a solid investment for the city's reserve funds at this moment. Passing on some information from our financial advisor, this issuance is so low that if we put it out to market, we might not get a bid back as well, so that's another incentive for us to do this at this time. But yes, I certainly have the cash flow and that issue taken care of in the next foreseeable future, we're fine.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do you have a first and second? Go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Final item to come before council this evening is just discussion of our October 29th workshop. Just to let everybody know, this is, we did change the date and time of our normal workshop time to accommodate with OKM and other schedules, so we're meeting on Monday, October 29th, at 6:30. Right now, we have, the agenda is going to include Phase 1 of the Master Park Plan, speed limits and commercial marketing. This evening, we've heard two other items. I don't know if they came up at this workshop, or, well, the first one was, we talked about the very beginning of the meeting when I brought up the idea about action-based minutes. You know, I mean, tonight's a good example. We all had some long, lengthy reports. Part of me wishes we could just go and do it right now, but if we, I think we could, let's put that on the agenda, unless anybody thinks that'll, a lot of discussion. I'd like to move forward on that. And then emergency management, which we heard Councilmember Benage bring up, and I like the idea of us talking about that, maybe after the first of the year, might be a good time to do that, according to kind of what our city attorney was saying earlier. I do want to let councilmembers know, I've not reached out to you guys individually, but city manager and I talked a couple of weeks ago about setting up a time sometime in November where we might even be able to do some real in-depth tours of the different buildings and the properties that the city owns. We can show you our preparation room, which actually, we do have one that's there in the police station. We can certainly, obviously, that'll be included in that. So unless anybody wants to move that up, I think, based on kind of what we heard earlier, I think that discussion could take place probably after the first of the year.
Right, Mr. Mayor, because there's a complete handbook that we've put together over the years that would need to kind of be outlined for council to be able to discuss.
So I've added the action-based minutes. Is there anything else that anybody wants to add to the workshop agenda?
The chief actually kind of oversees our emergency management plan, and we do have one, so I'll have him, he'll be here to talk about speed limits, so I can just have him mention, you know, maybe some few highlights and stuff. And like I said, he is working on updating that as well, but he can kind of tell you where we're at right now, and then when maybe it'll be updated.
Anything else? I have no need for an executive session. Anybody else? Not? I would entertain any motion?
Mr. Mayor, I need to adjourn.
Second?
First and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned at 7:44.